This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Today, thank you for joining the City of Kingston Planning Board at our monthly meeting. Today is September 21st, 2020. My name is Suzanne Cahill. I'm the Planning Director for the City of Kingston and Organizer for our virtual meeting. Before we begin our meeting, we would like to go over a few meeting guidelines to help us navigate this system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public and the press remain muted and off camera with the length of the meeting. As the organizer, I reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Board members and city staff will control their own mute button. As good practice, we ask that you mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a board member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. Chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. The board member will then unmute themselves, state their name, and speak clearly, muting after finished. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website at a later date. In lieu of public speaking during the monthly meeting, we requested all comments to be received by 2:00 PM on Friday, September 18th, 2020. Comments could have been emailed to Suzanne Cahill, Planning Director, at scahill@kingston-ny.gov, mailed, or placed in the drop box outside of City Hall. Written comments specific to any of the hearings would be mentioned during that particular hearing. There were no hearing or no public comment received during the meeting. If you have any audio issues, send a text message to the following number, 845-443-0416. I will repeat the number again, but be aware that phone calls will not be answered during the meeting. The number to text is 845-443-0416. As the organizer for today's meeting, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately or to enter into attorney-client conference if needed. materials for this meeting will be found on the City of Kingston website at www.kingston-ny.gov. Once on the homepage, scroll to the bottom under Meetings, and where you see Planning Board Meeting posted, click on the Agenda Packet. Thank you for your patience during these difficult times, and on behalf of the Planning Board, I wish you and your family good health. Now turn the floor over to Chairman Wayne Platt to call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Suzanne. A meeting, we're going to call the meeting to order of the September 21st, 2020 Planning Board Minutes, uh, meetings, excuse me. Introduce, introduction of board members, I'm Wayne Platt, I'm the chairman. We also have Charles Palaco, Vice Chairman. Mary Jo Wiltshire. Matt Gillis. Kevin Roach. Vince Archer. And Katie Bowarski. We also have Suzanne Cahill, who's the Planning Director. Kyle Adida is the Assistant Planner. Alderman Don Tolloman, who is the Common Counsel Liaison to the Planning Board. And we also have Assistant Corporation Counsel Daniel Gardenstein. Kevin, you're going to be a voting member tonight, okay? Robert's not here.
Very good.
Okay. Item number one is adoption of the July 20th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting transcript and decisions. Everybody has received a copy of that. Does anybody have any questions on it? Deletions or anything? No? At this time, this is Wayne Platt, I will make a motion to adopt the July 20th, 2020 Planning Board Minutes. Do I have a second?
Kevin Roach, second.
Roach has a second. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay. That is adopted. Okay. Moving on to item number two. We are now in public hearings. This is 152 St. James. It's a subdivision of the lands of St. James LLC. Section Block and Lot is 56.91-1-27. Seeker Determination, Zone R6, Ward 3, St. James Street LLC is the applicant owner. And Sue, we have nobody on, uh, speaking about this? You said you had no speakers?
Um, I do not see, um, the applicants. Mr. Lanzarone, are you on as a caller?
Sue, can you just make me a presenter too? So I can show them that? Sorry.
Suzanne?
Yes.
I can reach out to them, uh, if I happen to have their information, if you'd like.
Okay. Hang on.
Do we need them here for this?
Alderman Tolloman, I have their phone number as 687-065.
Okay, Suzanne, maybe we can come back to them or not? I don't know, whatever you think.
Okay.
We probably should have them here, right, Sue? Because this thing is going to be, uh... Yeah. You want to wait and then go back to this one, guys?
Kevin Roach, I say yes?
Go on to number three then. All right, we'll go back to this one. Item number three is 121 and 123 West Chester Street and 51-57 Jervis Street. Lot line deletion of the lands of Rebecca Blackwell Hafner. Section Block and Lot is 56.34-7-21, 56.34-7-22, and 56.34-7-19. Seeker Determination, Zone R1, Ward 9, Rebecca Blackwell Hafner is the applicant owner. All right. Is Rebecca here? Or a representative?
I don't see a name. I don't know if they're on a call. Is Rebecca on a phone call? I don't see anybody, Wayne.
All right, do they need to be here for this one?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Right, the application is to combine three parcels into one. Kylie, do we need to throw this up there at all? I don't, I don't, I don't... I don't know if you have anything for this. Of course you do. All right, so, um... The resulting parcels will be... They'll be... Zone, they'll be, uh, legal, legal lots, correct? Sue, we're good with that?
They're deleting the lots and combining the three parcels into one larger parcel.
Okay, okay.
The larger parcel will absolutely meet the zoning. It'll exceed zoning, Wayne.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this? No?
No.
Okay. So, a determination of iron and no significance will need to be discussed. It's a type-two action under Seeker, so no further review of the board is required. So at this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number three with Board Policy 6 to be signed. That is a motion. This is Wayne Platt, that's a motion. A second?
Wayne, would you amend that, please, to include the written descriptions?
Yes, Board Policy 6 will need to be signed, and the applicant will submit written descriptions as... And five, five copies in a Mylar. So, yes, I'll amend that motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Kevin Roach, I'll make a second.
Charles Palaco, second.
Who are you giving it to, Sue?
I heard Kevin Roach first.
That's fine, it's not a big deal.
All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Mary Jo?
Yes.
Okay, Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
That is adopted. Moving on to item number four. 245-251 Washington Avenue. It's a special permit amendment to install additional fencing on the site. Section Block and Lot is 56.90-6-20. Seeker Determination, R1, Ward 3, Central Hudson Gas and Electric is the applicant owner. This is the one on the corner of Janet Street, Sue?
Yes, Janet in Washington. It's the Central Hudson Substation. Luke, I believe you're on?
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome. All right, Luke, do you want to tell us why the additional fencing is needed?
So it's basically, it's the, um, the original install butted up to the neighbor's fence, and the neighbor's fence has, uh, became, has become compromised, and a portion of it is, um, is on the ground, in essence. This fence was just to be, uh, to match the existing fencing and to be able to put that barrier back up, because we've had some complaints about some of the, some homeless individuals staying on the property. So we're trying to make sure it's secure.
Anybody from the board have any questions? No? Okay. So, this is also a type-two action, so no further review of the board is required. So at this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number four with Board Policy 6 that will need to be signed. Anything else on that, Sue?
No, just as submitted.
Okay. Okay, that is a motion. Do I have a second on that? This is Wayne Platt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mary Jo?
Mary Jo, second.
Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
Our motion is adopted.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, item number five is 100 Lucas Avenue, Special Permit Renewal for a Radio Communication Antenna. Section Block and Lot is 56.89-2-25. Seek, uh, excuse me, uh, yeah, .200. Seeker Determination, Zone, Ward 1, Seventh Day Event Owner.
I'm here.
Okay. Who is this? I'm sorry?
Oh, my name is Michael Lawrence. With the Kingston Police.
Wayne.
Okay, Michael?
Yes, sir.
Welcome, how are you tonight?
Very good, and yourself?
Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any changes to what has been here already?
No, sir.
Okay. Sue, do you have anything that's popping out on your end?
No, we do not. You just do, do need to discuss the term.
What was the previous term here? I'm trying to, we're looking through.
Um, I believe it was one year, right? Kylie?
Yes, ma'am, one year.
Okay. Sue, do you have a recommendation?
I would, I would go to three.
Is the board good with that?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with it. There's been no complaints or anything.
No.
Okay.
I'm good with it. Kevin Roach?
All right. Hey, Ken? All right, so, um, under, has anybody asked any questions for the applicant? Okay. This is Wayne Platt again. This is under Seeker, it's a type-two action, so no further review of the board is required. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number five for three years with all previous conditions carried forward. Do I have a second on that?
Second, from Matt.
Second by Matt Gillis? All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes, sir.
Michael, thank you so much for attending tonight.
Thank you very much, have a great day, all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night.
Good night. All right. Item number six, 702 Broadway, is a special permit renewal for six residential units' use in the C2 Mixed Use Overlay District. Section Block and Lot is, I'm going to go on the, I'm going to go on the move here, Sue. Where are we here? 56.25. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Dash one, dash nine point one hundred. Seeker Determination, Zone C2, Mixed Use Overlay District, Heritage Area, Ward 2, Mohammed Al Shari is the applicant, Morning Tree Corp. is the owner. Okay. Who do we have here for our applicant?
I don't know if the applicant is here. Mr. Al Shari, are you there as a caller? If you are, would you unmute yourself, please? I don't see anybody, Wayne. For everybody, I believe Wayne is having an issue with his audio, so I'm going to give him a minute.
Hi Suzanne, it's Rich Lanzarone. I'm sorry, I was having some connection problems.
Oh, okay, Rich. All right. We'll get back to you, we're just finishing up one, all right? Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Wayne? Wayne? Kylie, do you want to try calling Wayne separately or texting him? And Chuck, I'm going to ask you to, uh, complete, go move forward on this 702 Broadway as Vice Chair, if you would, please?
Yes, I will. What, which item number was that, seven?
Number six.
Number six. I have to go back onto the computer, because I do not have it printed. Okay, this special permit renewal for six residential units used in the C2 District. Sue, do we have, uh, any paperwork on this that they come back, that there's any complaints or, or problems?
I do not believe we have anything.
Okay.
The question here with this one is the status of the actual work on the, um, on the units themselves being completed.
Okay, has... Who do we have on with this?
I don't see anybody on here.
Okay.
So this is Mary Jo. I think that we should table this until this applicant is present. Since we need to ask questions about the status of the, uh, the plan.
Okay.
I, I agree. Well, how's the other board members feel?
This is Matt, I'm fine with tabling.
This is Kevin, I agree, tabling.
Okay.
I make the motion, we table this. Do I have a second?
This is Kevin, I, I second.
Okay, Kevin seconds it. Mary, uh, Charles Palaco, is he a yes? Mary Jo?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
And Vince, you're on, because Wayne isn't.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that we tabled that, uh...
Okay. Chuck? We're going to go back now to number, item number two, 152 St. James Street. Mr. Lanzarone is with us now.
Okay. I'm trying to slide back to this.
Um, I just, I've been going back and forth with Wayne. He's, he can't hear, so he's going to log out and try to come back in.
Okay.
Might take a little bit.
Okay, item two is 152 St. James Street, subdivision of lands of, uh, St. James Street LLC, SBL 56.91-1-27, Seeker Determination Zone, R6, Ward 3, St. James Street LLC applicant owner. Okay? The application is to subdivide one lot with two structures and the two lots with one structure, uh, to be located on each lot. The structures are existing multifamily residence. Okay, did everybody get a chance to see the subdivision, Matt? Okay, does, anybody have anything on this?
Kylie, do you want to put that up on the screen, please?
Okay, this is, uh... Straightforward subdivision. Does anybody have any, uh, anything on it? Anything to discuss?
Chuck, we did have some questions.
Okay.
On this, if you look at the photograph that's provided in your staff notes.
I am.
I'll ask you to, um, when I did a site visit past this property, it appears that the storage of all of the refuse and recycling bins are all along the side of that building. There's also some utility connections, and then you have a guide wire and the pole. Um, I'm curious as to how, it appears that those might be interfering the way the photograph, photograph shows and the way the plan shows, the guide wire goes a lot further back on the property.
Okay, good. Who do we have on the line for this?
Rich.
Yeah, hi, this is Rich Lanzarone, hi.
Okay, can you explain that, Rich?
If we could look at the picture, let me try to pull the picture up. Hold on. Let me just give me a second to pull up the picture and then...
Sue, just so you know, Wayne is back.
Okay.
He can hear now.
You want to take this over, Wayne?
Yeah, so, so Suzanne, what the issue is, um, so this guide wire and utility is, um, is it obstructed something? I'm, I'm trying to pull up the picture myself. Let me see, let me grab my phone.
The picture, the picture that was provided, it's part of your application, um, shows the guide wire basically going deeper back onto the property. It's actually covered with vines. There, you can see it in the photograph that you provided, but the one on the plan shows it going, it's just the connection to the house, so that guide wire is not shown. And then, the other thing I saw when I went to the property is the, um, there were several recycle and refuse bins alongside of that entire building there. So there, I believe situated right on the walkway, perhaps?
Yes, yeah, so we would, yeah, so we have another area, actually, to place those bins, you know, further back on the property, so they're out of the walkway. That's not a problem. You know, we can, we can make sure, um, you know, we would actually maybe, um, it's like, if I'm looking, if I, you see the stairs, um, at the back of the front building? There's that little notch area there.
Yes.
We would, you know, put pavers or something right there behind that, store those bins there, so they would be out of that walkway going forward. Yes, we would have no problem doing that.
And the, so the bins for the, the rear property then would be stored on that back lot separately, right?
Yes, correct.
Now I believe they're just all stored up in front?
Yes.
From what I can see.
Yeah, they're all exactly right. They're all exact, right now, one, they're one account, um, with both the city and Welsh. Now, if you can move to, um, uh, let me see if I can pull up the picture. Hold on. I know. I was just... Okay. In the packet. Okay, I have the application up, sorry. I'm gonna look at the picture so we can, we can talk about this guide wire. Okay. All right, looking at the picture. So, um, so, I, I mean, I see a connection to the house on the side of the house, utility connection, that comes down to, you know, a set of meters. Is that the wire you're talking about?
No, that's the connection to the house. If you look at the photograph that you provided.
Right.
See, it's hard to see because it's covered with the, it's covered with the vines going up it. See it there? On the screen now?
Okay, let me see on the screen.
Right there.
Oh, oh, this right here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, so, um, gee, I don't know what that, I don't know, you took this picture when you were there? I'm not sure who struck that.
That, that was in your application.
Oh, this picture right here, okay.
Right. This, I'm actually pulling up on Google Maps right now, so this is, you know, this is old.
Yeah, I don't think those vines are there anymore. I think we, I think we.
I don't believe the vines are there, but the wire, I think, is, maybe.
The wire is there, yes. The wire is there. So what is the issue with the wire?
Well, will it interfere? Well, it's not located, so it's hard to tell how it sits in that easement. If that easement's gonna be used for your access in your utilities.
I, I believe it's outside the easement. And if it isn't, I could have, I could have it relocated. Uh, yeah, I, I mean, I have no problem getting it relocated.
Okay.
I'll just call the utility company.
Get that relocated, or we'll have to locate it first and then it might possibly need to be relocated for you to run your utilities. Because your utilities are connected right now, right? They're not separated.
They're not separated, no. Our intention is to separate them, yes.
Okay, so the location of your proposed utilities will need to be shown?
Yes. Yeah, I, I mean, we intend to locate them within that easement.
Right. You, do you feel comfortable that five feet is, is a wide enough easement for you to install and maintain utilities without having to go on to the neighboring properties?
Well, I, I think, I think it is. I mean, right now I own the neighboring properties, so certainly not an issue.
I understand that, but in the future.
But in the future, right, in the future. Yeah, so, you know. Yeah, so, I mean, it's gonna be two small pipes. I mean, it's a three-quarter inch copper pipe for the water and a, you know, a four to six inch pipe for, uh, the waistline. Uh, so it's not, we're not talking about large utilities, um, you know, you, um, if we had to say dig it up, I mean, a small machine could fit within the five-foot easement.
Are there no, I just have a question. Are the utilities already there? Are you, you're saying you're running new utilities?
Yeah, right now, the, the back building, um, has its own electric connection, but the water and sewer line are run through, uh, the front building. They connect actually right near the street, near the sidewalk. So we would disconnect them there and, and connect them directly out to the street. We've already spoken to Public Works and the Water Department about the location of how, you know, exactly how we would accomplish that. And, and we understand that that would be, you know, a condition of approval.
Sue, has the zoning board, um, ruled on this?
Yes, the zoning board approved, uh, the requested variances.
Yes. Rich, would it, how difficult would it be? I, I, I would like to see that easement widened a little bit. It wouldn't necessarily mean re- relocating the property line, but just widen for purposes of, um, future maintenance.
Now, this is Matt. Now, is all access to that rear or proposed rear parcel just through this five-foot easement?
Yes.
There's no way to get vehicles or fire trucks or anything back there?
No.
Gotcha.
But it's, I mean, but it's an existing condition. I mean, there's really nothing, nothing really changing, actually, physically.
Right. I'm just trying to look at future, um, down the road, just, just for purposes of maintenance. I mean, the fire truck, if there's a fire back there, the fire truck's gonna go there. They'll drive across the property, but say something to that, but I think for maintenance purposes, the easement should be at least 10 feet.
He's gone.
So, um,
Do you mean?
So what are you suggesting that we give a, that the, the adjacent property get a maintenance easement to this property?
Yes.
Okay, I, that, that's, okay, so it's, um, I think that's doable.
Okay.
I have, I'd have to double check, but I think that's doable.
Okay.
Sue, so what width are you recommending there?
10 foot instead of five.
Well, five foot's an egress and egress. See, the reason.
That would be part, five foot would just be, yeah, walking back and forth, ingress and egress, but the, that five combined with the additional five on the adjacent parcel would create 10 foot, and that would allow you to have your maintenance of your lines, your water and sewer.
Oh, yeah, okay, I, I got it. Yeah, I mean, because right now it's set right on the property line, and we're trying not to move the property line, right?
Right.
Um, so, so this other five feet would be, uh, basically only, only for the purpose of, would be for the purpose of maint- maintenance of the utility.
Correct.
Nice, okay. All right. I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
Those were my questions.
Okay. Chuck, you want me to take this?
Would you calm down? Did you take this?
Yes, Wayne, go ahead.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions? Okay. Um, let me get my notes here. Uh, under seeker, this is a type two action, so no further review of the board is required. They've already had zoning board of appeals approval, correct, Sue? Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Other than Board Policy Six and the 10-foot easement, is there anything else, Sue, that you're, that you want on there?
I would include that we locate the guide wire, and then if that needs to be relocated, work with the utility company to appropriately have it redirected. We need written descriptions of the resultant parcels, five paper copies in one Mylar. All the refuse storage will be behind the front building, not visible from the street, and we will need the written easement, along with the maintenance easement and the location of the proposed utilities.
Okay, with what?
Can I, hold, can I add something? So the utilities, in the past, when we've had issues like this where the utilities are part of the other home, um, last time we had that as a condition, that that be installed before the maps are signed? Is that how we're going to handle this one? I think we did that with Main Street.
That's a good point, yes. I think that should take place.
Everybody good with including that?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, so all of the items that Sue mentioned, uh, we're gonna have Board Policy Six on there as well, and, uh, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve item number two with all of those items that were just listed. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Do we have a second on this then?
Second.
Chuck?
Yes. Chuck?
Second by Charles Palaco. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That is adopted. Rich, good seeing you again, pal. All right, have a good evening. Thanks. Are we?
Thank you very much.
Hey, Rich.
Good night, Rich. Item number seven, Wayne.
All right. Actually, I had to leave the meeting, Sue, before I had to go down and get, the boys were out on a call, I had to go down and get their, their takeout order, so thanks, thanks Chuck for taking over. Item number seven is, uh, 356 Broadway. And it's a special permit renewal to operate a rooming house. Section block and lot is 56.43-8-61.1. Uh, secret determination, zone C2, mixed-use overlay district, heritage area, Ward 9, TVG Group LLC is the applicant owner. Do we have, who, who do we have representing here tonight?
I don't know if anyone is here.
Okay.
Are there any, are there any parties online for 356 Broadway?
You have a different number for it. This is Frank Longitano, Susan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is not for 30 Broadway, is it?
No, this is 356 Broadway, Frank.
Okay, thank you. I'll hold on, thanks.
Okay.
Sorry.
Um, Sue, do we have a, a, uh, inspection report from Building Safety on this? This is Wayne Platt.
I don't believe we do, Kyla, right?
I don't think, I don't know when the last one was.
All right. Um, and the reason I ask is because I know that during this, the, the virtual meetings that we've been having, if we do grant a, a renewal to anything that has a rooming or a, a residential aspect to it, we've usually had a condition attached to it where we would wait for Building Safety approval. I mean, the applicants aren't here. I don't know if there's, if you wanna table this thing, or, I don't, Sue, do we have enough information to go to move forward with this now?
Um.
I mean, I, I went there today, just down to the, the commercial part of it, just to look about the, uh, the Knox box. I didn't make it upstairs. Alls we're talking about is the upstairs portion of this, right?
Correct. We have not received any complaints, um, but, and we have not received the police incident report either. I would be leaning towards tabling it until we at least have those.
I agree. And, and then, you know, this keeps us consistent with what we've done with other, other properties, uh, through this virtual, uh, meeting, um, aspect of it. So everybody in agreement with that? You think we should table?
This is Kevin Roach, yes.
Yes.
Mary Jo, I agree.
Okay, cool. Um, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we table item number seven. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Kevin Roach, second. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Joe Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes, sir.
Adopted. Item number seven is tabled. All right. Moving on to item number eight. Uh, 243 Hurley Avenue is a special permit renewal to operate a community solar array, section block and lot is 47.70-1-6, secret determination, zone C3, Ward 1, Hudson Solat, is that solar or so, I'll say solar, is the applicant, St. Clarus Church of God Incorporated is the owner. Do we have anybody here? We probably don't even need anybody for this, right, Sue?
John Bridge, are you here for this application?
Yes.
Okay, we do have someone with us, Wayne. John Bridge, can you identify yourself?
Yes, this is Mrs. Bridge. Doreen Bridge.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm doing, John, how are you?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Near 55 Hoffman Street.
Yes, ma'am.
We're doing 243 Hurley Avenue.
We'll, we'll talk to you in a little bit.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
I don't see anybody here, Wayne, for this one.
Um, do we need anybody for this? I, I don't believe we do for this. This is the only thing we need, does everybody, do we need the applicant here, everybody? I think we can go ahead with this right now? Good?
I would say yes, but I, I mean, I would like to confirm, um, the status of completion of phase two.
The status of what? I'm sorry?
Completion of phase two. If you look at your staff notes, there's a timeline that was provided as part of the application, and it does say the estimated completion of phase two, the construction of phase two would be this month, September. So I would like to confirm the status of that.
Do we know, did they have, they, so they did start, we've confirmed they've started that construction in June of this year?
Uh, the building permit has been issued.
Okay.
In February, that was issued.
All right. The estimated completion of phase two, is that something we can leave at staff level and just maybe leave this at a, at a term of one year? Sue?
I'm comfortable with that, but the board has to make that decision.
If you felt okay with that, I mean, so how's the rest of the board feel with that? We're gonna go with one year.
I'm fine with that, Kevin Roach.
Matt, you're good? Katie?
Yep, sounds good.
Vince, you're good with that?
Yep, good with that.
MJ?
I'm good.
All right. Okay, um, so, uh, this is a type two action under seeker, so no further review of the board is required for that. Uh, this time I'll make a motion that we approve item number nine for a period of one year, the renewal for a period of one year, and, uh, the applicant will bring in information on their estimated completion of phase two, uh, to be reviewed by staff.
Wayne, are all original conditions carried forward?
Copy that. Yep, all, all original conditions carried forward as well. This is Wayne Platt. That is a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Kevin Roach, second.
Kevin Roach has a second. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, adopted. Okay, good. All right, moving on to item number nine. 76-88 Spring Street. It's a special permit renewal for 12 apartments. Section block allotted 56.42-10-8. Secret determination, Zone RT, Rhonda Historic District, heritage area, also in coastal zone, Ward 8. Lloyd Levy is the applicant owner. Mr. Levy here?
Yes, Mr. Levy, thank you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, how are you?
Yes, we can.
Fine, how are you gentlemen and ladies? Nice to see you again. Yes, we're asking for a renewal for our special permit for the 12 apartments. In fact, 11 and a half were completed and then we faced pandemic and everything slowed down. So we were requesting permission to extend it so that we can, we only have one apartment left to do so that we can complete that one. Charles Wesley, I think you know, is our architect. And he asked me to attend the meeting today. I'm the applicant. My wife and I are the owners. So that's our request. We've been before you, obviously, before. So I'm not sure if you have any questions of me.
Other than you're just waiting for that last apartment to be built? Any other, any other changes to what's going on there? Everything's good?
No, everything actually, as you know, we initially had not problems. We had some discussions with the landmarks, et cetera. Those have all been settled. We have, we have completed the, I believe we've completed all the outdoor work, which was very important to the landmarks because we were going to try to attempt to restore the building as much to its original look on the outside. So all the porches have in fact been done and approved. And we were halfway through the very last apartment when we come to a halt. So we're requesting permission for an extension on our special permit so we can complete that last apartment and then we're done. No, we've, we've had no problems. No, I'm no, obviously, you know, normal little problem, but no, no major problems.
All right. Sue, the term for, was it, was this a year that we've had on this last one here?
I believe it was.
I believe so.
Okay.
I would stick with a year until the final certificate of occupancy is issued and then I would suggest going longer after that.
That makes sense. Everybody good with that, for that term?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I actually didn't hear that. I apologize.
I recommended that they stick with the one-year renewal. And then, once that, all the conditions and the work is all complete, you've received a certificate of occupancy, the term would be extended.
That would be perfectly fine for me. Thank you. That would be perfectly fine for me. Yes, I appreciate it.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant? Sue, you're good with everything else then?
Yep, just all the original conditions are carried forward.
Yes.
All right, under Seeker, this is a type 2 action. Again, no further review of the board is required. So at this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number nine for a period of one year with all original conditions carried forward. That, this is Wayne Platt. Do I have a second on that?
Charles Palaco, second.
Charles Palaco is a second. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, adopted. Mr. Levy, thank you very much.
And, and thank you very much in these difficult times. I really do appreciate it. Am I to sign off now, Ms. Cahill?
Yes, you're all done.
Thank you very much and, well, thank you. I don't know what else to say. Thank you very much. Be well, be safe and healthy. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
All right. Item number 10 is 55 Hoffman Street. A special permit to establish an accessory apartment. Section block allotted 56.26-10-10. Secret determination, Zone R1, Ward 5. Doreen Bridge is the applicant owner. Okay, Ms. Bridge, now we can have you here. How about that?
Yes, sir.
How you doing tonight?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good, thank you. Do you want to tell us what you want to do here? Want to give us a little overview?
Yes, I started this apartment, this basement that I have. And I wanted to put a bedroom and a small kitchen down there. And I was granted a special permit a few years back. A financial difficulty came in and I stopped the work. And so I lose the permit. So what I want is a renewal of the permit to complete what we started. Because the building was, we get the permit and it started. Everything was put in, the electrical and they came from your place, your guys came and inspected and it was, everything was okay. And so I just want to finish it now, finish it up and close it out. So I'm asking for a renewal of that permit if I could get it back.
Do we have any sketches or anything, Kyla, that were submitted?
Yes, I submitted some documents recently.
Oh, this is back in 2012, all right. Nothing has changed from this, Ms. Bridge?
No, sir, nothing has changed.
Do we need a more recent inspection by Building and Safety?
Not, no, they haven't come yet.
Right, they'll get, they'll get an inspection based on the permit once all the work is completed.
Okay.
And Sue, this is Wayne Platt again. What about the parking here? Is this, is this, we're still good with that?
I believe there are, there's a three-car garage in the rear.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Bridge?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, can you just discuss how vehicles will be parked? You need parking for three cars. Now, you have a three-car garage or is that on your neighbor's property?
No, that's my garage. It's a three-bay. It's a big garage. It's a three-bay. And there's also the parking on the side on Peter's, I think, Peter Street.
Okay, but onsite, you have enough room for, are those three bays available for parking?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then they're fine, Wayne.
Okay, thank you. And she's aware of all of these requirements? Must be owner occupied, the list we have in front of us here. She, you're, Ms. Bridge, you're aware of all that?
We will place them in the decision letter.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Kyla, thanks for pulling that up. The term for the permit, where staff is recommending one year, which is, which is rather typical for, you know, up and, you know, from when things become first up and running. Everybody's good with a one-year permit for that? Okay. All right, so under, we're gonna go to Seeker now. Under Seeker, this is a type 2 action, so no further review of the board is required. So at this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number 10 for a period of one year. And Sue, do you want to go over some of the conditions there that you have?
I added in Board Policy 6, Board Policy 19, Knox Box Policy and the Board Policy for the Knox side as well. And then the conditions of the zoning ordinance that are incorporated into the staff notes, which come right out of the zoning ordinance. Those being that the building must be owner occupied. Located within the principal dwelling and the principal dwelling must have existed prior to 1982 and contain a minimum of 2,000 square feet. The minimum size shall be 300 square feet, maximum 600 square feet of the accessory apartment. No more than one accessory apartment. Dwelling shall continue to look like a single-family home. The approval for water and sewer connection must be required and the off-street parking for three spaces must be maintained. That will get a final Building Department inspection once all the work is complete on the permit that's been issued.
Okay, thank you, Sue, for that. So that is part of the motion that I'm making to approve item number 10. Do I have a second on that?
Kevin Roach, second.
Kevin Roach has a second. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, adopted. Thank you, Ms. Bridge.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening.
You too, sir. Thank you a lot. Thanks, everyone. Can I log off now?
Yeah, you can log off.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Item number 11 is 34 Franklin Street. Special permit renewal to operate a four-room boarding house. Section block allotted 56.93-2-6. Secret determination, Zone R2, Ward 4. Jacqueline Lambert is the applicant owner. I see here that this was tabled at the July meeting to allow for an inspection by Building Safety. Inspection was conducted, however, there were numerous issues that needed to be addressed within 30 days. Reinspection has been scheduled for September 30. We don't know if the violations have been addressed. The staff would
Know until the reinspection.
What's that?
We will not know until the reinspection.
One more time, Sue, sorry.
We don't know if the violations have been corrected. We're waiting for the Building Department to do their reinspection on September 30.
Any that we table this again right now?
I would, because of the numerous violations that they did identify, yes.
Okay, I'm comfortable. Everybody's good with that?
Good.
Okay, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we table item number 11. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Charles Palaco. Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Motion adopted. We're tabling. All right, still under public hearings, item number 12. 20-42 Broadway. Special permit renewal for residential units. Section block allotted 56.43.8.61.1. Secret determination, RLC, heritage area, coastal zone, Ward 8. 30 Kingston Realty Corporation is the owner.
Wayne, I need to recuse myself.
Okay. What's the reasoning?
My husband, his business is located inside this building and they rent from the applicants.
Okay. All right, Sue, who are we bringing this one to vote?
It's, I'm here, Frank Longitano, 30 Kingston Realty.
Vince will be voting as the alternate in Mary Jo's absence. Kevin is voting for Robert.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
There's no changes on this building whatsoever. It's just standard upkeep. It was converted from offices to 10 residential apartments. I think it was about seven or eight years ago, maybe somewhere around there. I don't even know, but it's basically, there's no changes at all. And we're looking for a renewal again and that's basically it. Thank you.
All right, and I see that the previous term was for five years and staff is recommending another five-year term. Is everybody good with that on the board?
Yes, Kevin.
Yes, from Vince.
Doc, yes.
So this looks pretty straightforward. I don't see anything that's jumping out of my staff notes here.
No, there have been no complaints. Everything is fine.
All right, so under Seeker, this is a type 2 action. Again, no further review of the board is required. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 12 for a period of five years with all original conditions carried forward. That's Wayne Platt here. Do I have a second on that?
Second, Chuck.
Second, Chuck. All right, all in favor? Wayne Platt, yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Archer?
Yes.
Okay, motion is adopted. Frank, thank you very much for stopping by tonight.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to say, I just want to tell you, this is fabulous. Thank you, everybody. Everybody stay healthy. Take care, Susan.
Bye-bye, Frank.
Good seeing you, Susan.
All right, we're welcoming Mary Jo back into the fold. Moving on to item 13. 101 Greenkill Avenue is a special permit renewal for seven artist slots. Out of 56.109-2-41. Station, Zone O2, Ward 4. 101 Greenkill Avenue LLC is the applicant owner. Okay.
Mr. Barlov is with us, Wayne.
Hello, Mr. Barlov?
All right, where are you, Mark?
He might, he there?
Mr. Barlov, can you speak? We're not able to hear you.
Phone went gray on me here on the attendees list.
Let me see if I can.
Suzanne, he can hear everybody, but you can't hear him. So he's gonna try to call it again right now.
Okay, yeah, I see he's
All right, where? All right, where, where on Greenkill is this, Sue, now?
This is the old Keen Memorial Building.
Anything jumping out with staff with this?
No.
And can we, can we get Mr. Barlov to answer if any, any changes at all right now? Previous, the previous renewal?
He's trying to connect. Let me see.
All right, Sue, the open storage part that you're talking about, is that fenced-in area where the, where all those pallets were being stored? Is that what your area of concern was?
Yes. It's in the separate parking lot across the street, across south, what would it be?
Can everyone hear me?
Now we can, yeah.
Is that Mr.?
Okay. This is Hagai.
How are you?
Good, I'm fine, how are you?
Thank you.
I started hearing Thai, okay.
Okay. Have there been any changes since the last renewal?
No, not to my knowledge.
All right, and I see that the storage in that, you know, that fenced-in area has been cleared and that's, that's, that's good. There was quite a bit of stuff in there before, and- Okay.
Apologize for that.
All right, and part of the staff notes here, and maybe Sue has already talked to you about this, is that if off-street parking demand is needed, that will need to revert back to parking, okay?
Yeah, we have plenty of parking based on the current lot, but yeah, I'm aware of that.
Okay. All right, the inspection, Sue, has that happened yet with BSD, building safety?
No, it's scheduled for October 1st.
Okay, it's scheduled for October 1st, Wayne.
All right, can we make that a condition of approval?
I would say yes, it's satisfactory inspection.
Okay, the board was good with that? Okay. And as far as the term for the new, for this renewal, it can be renewed up to a maximum of three years. The previous one was for three years. Is everybody happy with going with another three-year term on that? Yes, okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay. All right, so under seeker, no further review of the board is required. So this time I'll make a motion that we approve item number 13 for a period of three years. We're going to have all original conditions carried forward. And also it will require a favorable inspection by building safety, which is scheduled for October. Anything else, Sue, you want to add to that?
No, I believe that was it.
So this is Wayne Platt, that was a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Kevin Roach.
Okay, second by Kevin. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, it is approved. Thank you, Mr. Barleth.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, stay safe, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 14 is 20 Cedar Street. Special permit renewal to the approved plan. Section block and lot is 56.109-4-2.100. Secret determination Zone O2 Mixed Use Overlay District. Ward 4, Rupco is the applicant owner. Do we have somebody from Rupco here?
I believe Scott Dutton is representing Rupco this evening.
Scott?
Good evening, everyone.
Anything else, anything going on there? Same stuff, right?
Well, we have a C of O and we're fully occupied.
Any, any, any questions from the board? And we have, what, we have a one-year term on the last permit, Sue?
I don't, I don't recall. I believe it was, it was short, but I think obviously the building's been complete. We've done all our final inspections. You're going to be looking at the, releasing the performance bond this evening. I would go with a longer term. I would say five years is sufficient.
And we're, you're recommending releasing the balance of the performance bond too?
That's, it's an, it's on the agenda later, but you will be considering that this evening.
Okay, I don't know if we could take care of that right now or not, okay. All right, what, you said five years you're recommending?
That's what I would recommend.
How's the board, board good with that?
They're good with that.
Okay.
Can we do the bond release now, since he's here and-
Scott's going to be with us for a while.
Okay, all right. Sorry, Scott, trying to help you.
All right, so under seeker, this is also a type 2 action, so no further review of the board is required. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 14 for a period of five years with all original conditions carried forward. Do I have, that's just Wayne Platt. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mary Jo. Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Motion adopted.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Scott, we'll see you in a bit. Item number 15 is 21 O'Neill Street. Special permit to establish a drinking establishment in an existing building. Section block and lot is 56.25-2-15. Secret determination, Zone C3 Ward 4. Eric Sterniolo is the applicant owner. How did I do on that one? All right. Welcome. Eric, you there?
So, yeah, this is Marcos right here.
Okay. You want to go ahead and tell us what your plan is here?
Yes, is it possible to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay. I think I have to be the presenter.
Sue, I think you have to make him a presenter. I don't have that ability.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay. So yeah, so this, this is 21 O'Neill Street. This project, there's existing conditions, so the existing two-story building. What we'd like to do is convert it, convert the ground floor to a beer garden, a craft beer garden. This is the approximate location, just off of Broadway through here. And we would like to show you the site plan which is here. The existing two-story building located in the front of the property with a vacant space, a parking lot in the back. The, we're proposing actually remove the site handicap accessible map and remove the small roof structure in the back. And the first floor, we were planning on taking out some of the interior walls or to open up the space for the beer garden. The site plan is shown here. So we would also like to propose a new accessible handicap entryway from the street and placing the dumpsters for the trash on this side of the property with possible seating for outdoor dining in the back. So this property is, has a unique condition because of the narrow ingress and egress off the side of the, of the property. And it's because of this, we're actually requesting parking to be on-site instead of on-site. So this is the-
Marcos, I missed what you had.
Yeah, so this property, let me see if I can show you. Are you able to see this Google map?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, the property currently right now has a, the ground floor was an office space and the second floor is office. And so the parking in the back is actually for the upgraded use to a, to a beer garden with the added parking requirement. It's actually a bit dangerous to have occupant, actually customers come in and out of this entryway because it is only 12 feet wide. So due to that issue or restriction, we're actually looking for the planning board and the zoning board to approve on-street parking, actually. So we have a parking calculation which we can get into as well. So the interior proposed plan will look something like this. And the exterior as well, if we're actually wanting to engage the community, we're actually very close to the rail trail. So we're also looking to make use of the backyard for artist events and possible farmers markets in the, in the future. So with respect to the hours of operation, we're looking to open Monday through Friday, start at 3:00 PM and then closing at 1:00 AM. And Saturday and Sunday would open at noon and end at 1:00 AM.
This is Wayne Platt. Marcos, I'm reading my notes here. Have you already applied to the ZBA for a variance from the parking requirement?
No, we have not.
Okay.
We basically just wanted to present to the planning board to get some feedback on the property and this prepared.
This is Kevin Roach. This is Kevin Roach. I, I just had some experience with the building. I was on the board of the Red Cross for many years and I honestly never had any trouble pulling in that back parking lot. All the board, all the board members would park back there for our meetings. So I'm not sure why that 12-foot is considered to be a problem. Just thought I'd add that.
This is, this is Sue. I think the issue is, is that this is going to be more in-and-out traffic on a regular basis. Whereas when you have an office or if you had a scheduled meeting, people would be coming in generally all at one time and then leaving at one time. With a restaurant, you have constant in-and-out and that accessway is also there. Access to the rear area of the property for their outdoor uses that they're proposing. So the two combined, it really creates not a very favorable situation. I will add that, and Eric, I believe you're on the line for them as well. The applicants have done an extensive amount of outreach to a lot of the surrounding property owners where off-street parking is available. And they've, they've touched base with generally every single one of those without any success in obtaining the ability to utilize those parking areas for their needs. They have been working aggressively, I will give them that credit. I think they've done a great job. And so their next step really is to go to the ZBA for a variance.
If I can jump in quickly to them?
Sure.
Hi, everyone, I'm Eric. So yeah, we, as you can see on your screen, we've located 11 potential parking lots to rent within a, within 400 square foot radius of our building. And I spent the last month talking to all the owners. And we got a answer of no from everybody. No one is willing to rent us space with the exception of one lot and who we could not scrap down the owner to talk to. But so far, all 11 have said they are not available for lease for our use.
So this is Mary Jo. I mean, I was going to make a similar comment to Kevin's. I think when there's off-street parking available, it's hard to, it would be hard for me to say that, that I would not want them to find a way to take advantage of that as off-street parking. Because as you know, on-street parking is always a, always an issue in every neighborhood.
Yeah, our concern is kind of what Suzanne was talking about, but if you can imagine, you know, us being open for eight hours and we serve 100 customers and there's constantly people pulling in and out of the driveway, which is one car width. We think that there's definitely going to be instances where one car is exiting while another car is entering and they're kind of going to be head-on. Which is, you know, a chance of an accident.
But if, but if you are going to be that busy, don't you think that all those people trying to find on-street parking there is going to be problematic?
Yeah, which is why we reached out to every possible solution really for, for off, for off-street parking off of our site in the area. And I'm happy to get into the specifics of what I did and who I talked to. But you know, we, we pretty much exhausted that resource and no one was willing to, to leave space to us.
Sue, this is Wayne Platt. What about that lot, municipal lot by Steve Deli? Are we approximated to that at all for this?
No, it's about 470 or so square feet away from the building. And there's a further one that is about like 700 square feet away. And those are the two closest municipal lots.
How, how close do we have these, Sue, to a municipal lot, the wave?
400 feet, as the crow flies.
All right. And let me see here. Yeah. All right.
That's why if you recall that the diagram that they had up before that showed all of the parking areas that they, the individuals they've reached out to, there was a circle around that. That showed the radius of the 400 feet from their site.
Well, especially in the wintertime, I mean, people are not going to want to walk that far if it's snowy or cold, so it's hard, I'm, you know, I hear what you're saying about Steve Deli, but that seems a little bit far for me that it would be viable parking for him.
Well, I mean, I'm just, what about if we move that to the back of the lot and then do another circle?
It's, it's not my, I guess my, my concern's not so much that it's, that it is parking, it's just that I just don't, I don't realistically see people walking from there to that business.
Yeah. I would, I would agree with Mary Jo's statement.
And Mary Jo, if I could just go back to your concern, what I was explaining about the head-on collision possibility. We're also worried about if someone then is going to have to back up to let the other car through, especially if they're going to have to back up into the street. That is dangerous for collisions and hitting a pedestrian or hitting someone on a bike.
I, I absolutely understand your, I understand your issue. That's not the, that's not the thing. It's that if you're going to have community events and a busy restaurant or tavern, the amount of cars that you're talking about putting on the street seems problematic to me. That's all I'm saying. I support the fact that you want to make- the amount of cars that you're talking about putting on the street seems problematic to me. That's all I'm saying. I support the fact that you wanna make the business. I, I would want you to succeed there. But it seems like a lot of, it seems like a lot of on-street parking to me. So that, that's my concern. I'm not, I, I'm not disputing the fact that you would have an issue with people going in and out, but I'm just seeing if there could be some more creative way to fix that since you have parking available behind the building. So I mean, there, there, there's a potential with this business to have a lot of cars taking up on-street parking. That's, that's really just my, that's my issue.
Right, understood. Thank you.
Is it possible that you could get access from a neighbor behind it to get in there? Or I can't really see on this map if that's possible. Is there another access to that parking lot from the other side?
There is not. Behind us is the Neon Sign Studio. The building actually abuts our rear. And next to us is the, the Shabbat's Auto Body Shop. So there's no, there's no space for us to, to add anything.
Eric, I know you said you approached the owner where the Shabbat's is for use of that space for parking. Did you ask them about using that just for an ingress and an egress, like a, or just an in? So you could have traffic go in through that and access the rear of your property and then go out through your existing driveway?
I did not specifically ask that, but he did recently rent his property to a tenant. So it would have to be agreed to or put in the lease for the tenant. I could definitely reach out. But I don't really see that as a realistic possibility. And also, he has, he has a fence, so we'd have to agree to, to take down the fence. Our, our, our best hope is the parking lot directly across the street, which is, the address is actually 25 Field Court.
Right.
That's the vacant, I think it was the unemployment or something building. The owner is Donna Spada. And I've been trying for weeks to get in touch with her, and I have been, been successful. So that's not a definite no. That's just a, I can't talk to the owner. I sent her a certified letter, which she received. I reached out to the tenants of another building she owns, who forwarded her what I was looking for and my email address and my phone number, and I haven't heard back from her.
I can now comment that, that building is, I believe this, the city is taking that over. It's a Brownfield and will eventually be ready for, and available for sale. But I don't think Spada's in control of it anymore.
Okay, yeah, we weren't really sure. We were hearing different things from different people. Thank you.
Thanks to Alda and Tyler. And that is something, then, that we can check into where that might be at with the city taking ownership under the Brownfields program.
And we are, we are planning on submitting our application on Thursday to the zoning board about all of this.
This is Kevin Roach. May I ask if you have actually checked about the number of spaces that would be available on O'Neill Street? It looks like a lot of the spaces are actually abutting the parking lots. Voices Dairy, maybe? Is that what that is there? Yeah, Voices. Doesn't seem like there's actually a lot of park, even on-street parking spots available.
Right, no, I don't know, and I don't know if maybe someone has an idea of how to figure that out? Or if there's an official record of that or anything?
It would be an actual, just on-the-ground site survey. You'd have to walk up and down the street and see what's, you know, how many are there physically. I don't have a map.
Okay, thank you.
Just moving on, obviously, I, I think ultimately the board will end up tabling this application this evening. If the board has had a chance to review some of the other staff notes and questions, or if you have any additional comments right now that we can share, we'll certainly share our staff notes with the applicant. But if any of the board members have any other questions or comments that you'd like to share or ask right now?
This is Mary Jo. I do support, I support that the, the business idea itself, but I, I, the way the current parking is laid out here, I just don't think that there's enough. I mean, obviously, we need to wait to hear from zoning. But, um, you know, and I appreciate that the applicant's made some efforts, you know, already to reach out to his neighbors. I think that that has to, that has to bear a little more fruit, I think, especially if they could get an ingress or an ingress out from the back, you know, tenant, Shabbat's, or, you know, the possible, the parking lot that we were just talking about that the city took over. I think that has to be solved before this can be viable, in my opinion.
This is Wayne Platt. I would, you know, seeing how the, the rest of the board is, is going with this, I think that, you know, we should look at our staff notes here and also wait to see what the zoning board of appeal says when they, when the applicants do, do actually apply for a variance for the parking. Anybody else on the board?
I agree with you, Wayne. Kevin Roach.
Hey.
I agree, Wayne.
So Marcos, I think we're, we're gonna, we're gonna move to table this and wait to see how you make out with zoning, okay?
Sounds like a plan. Thank you so much.
Right. So at this time, I'm gonna make a motion that we table item number 15. Do I have a second on that?
Second, Kevin Roach.
All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Chuck Palaco?
Yes.
Wiltshire?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
That is adopted. Okay, Marcos, well, hopefully we'll be seeing you at some point in the near future.
Can't wait to see you guys in person. Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, standby here. Alright, now, whoa, we're in new business. How about that? Scott will still, he's still here. Item number 16 is 20 Cedar Street. Site plan amendment to add business identification signage. Section block and lot is 56.109-4-2.100. Secret determination. Zone C2, mixed-use overlay district, Ward 4. Timely Signs of Kingston is the applicant. Rupko is the owner. Scott, you with us?
No, Tyson. Tyson from Timely Signs is with us on this one, and Scott is here too.
Welcome again. Alright, um, tell us what you got here.
So we're proposing to put a single-sided sign on the front of the building on the overhang area. I'm sure everybody has their paperwork showing on the second page. It shows rendering of where it's going in the building. And with the goal here is do a backlit sign that actually reflects light off the, the large back, looks like a light gray background on here, so that you get what's almost considered a halo effect for the letters Center for Creative Education on there. The little rendering on the first page, bottom left, shows the view of what we're trying to do here. The leftmost side is the logo. The next line item there is the letters, the dimensional letters there. We have the, the light bar on the bottom, or multiple light bars that are shining up against that background, which is the, for, the rightmost area there, with some brackets to hold that whole sign on the building.
Okay, I don't see much verbiage from staff on this, so it must be pretty good in their eyes, huh, Sue?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
I think, I think you understand, and this one is, you know, the, the lighting, the color will change, but it's not going to be a constant change, like one might think, like every five minutes. It's a very subtle change that will be done for different events or seasonally change, something along those lines.
Similar to what you guys do in City Hall there with the lights up top.
Correct, with the tower.
Tower, yes.
This is Katie.
Good analogy.
I, I just had a question. Could you talk about the view-through films a little bit and what that would look like?
Yes, so that hasn't been approved yet there. I don't, I'm not sure if that was supposed to be part of this. We can certainly add it in there. But the view-through films is a one-way film that are on, like, for example, the City of Kingston buses on the windows there, where you can apply graphics printed on the outside, but looking from inside out, it just looks like a tinted window.
Okay.
They haven't agreed to any graphics for that quite yet. Their main focus is this sign on the top of the building to get some type of focus to their actual business there.
Okay, so that's not part of this application?
Um, as of right now, we don't have anything to show, so I'm sure you guys would wanna see what the graphics would look like if we were gonna put something on there, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, I'm really just focusing on the sign on the first page there.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely.
Question there. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Under Seeker, this is a Type 2 action, a very popular action tonight, where no further review of the board is required. So at this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number 16 with Board Policy 6 that need to be signed. Anything else you wanna throw on top of that one, Sue, with?
No. My, my one is throw in that window policy. We'll just include that as a catch-all.
Okay, with the 20%. The planning board has a policy, no sign is to 20%. And also, as Katie had asked about, when there's different graphics gonna go in there, do we, do we need to have the applicant come back and, and discuss that, Sue? Or no?
I wouldn't think, I mean, how, how different are we talking, Tyler, or Tyson?
How different are we talking about? And you're like, well, this is just showing where view-through films are potentially supposed to be proposed. There's no actual graphics chosen for that yet. We would not proceed with anything until we show you guys what they would potentially want. The whole thing that I'm seeing here is that if, if 20% is all that's allowed, it, to me, it looks like this is more than 20% of the windows and probably would not be approved, but I'm not sure at this point.
Okay, so we'll hold that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm only focusing on the sign on top of the building as of right now.
Right.
Alright, so I won't make that part of the motion then. Alright, that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Kevin Roach, second.
Kevin, all in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Chuck Palaco?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care. Alright, um, item number 1789 Washington Avenue is a site plan to install signage. Section block and lot is, excuse me, 48.330-1-1. Secret determination, zone C2, Ward 1. Timely Signs of Kingston is the applicant. Andrew and Kendra Pleben are the owners.
Hi, everyone.
Are we back here again? Hey, how you doing again?
Tyson here. I'm doing well. So there's already been a banner put up there, at least temporarily at this point, because it was only up there a couple of weeks ago. And basically, they're really just looking to have, to continue to use that banner as a semi-permanent application. Where they weren't looking to put a permanent sign, where I say permanent, like a hard panel on there. I think it's just a little bit too expensive at this point, and they're not quite sure what the longevity of that building is going to be. They're not sure what they're gonna wanna do. But the owners of the building are totally fine with what we've proposed here. So the point of this application is to just get this to be able to stay on there for an extended period of time.
Okay, sounds good.
Anybody, any questions? It's trying to promote businesses in the uptown Kingston area. It's the whole point of the, of the sign.
Okay.
Wayne Robert Gaston is online too. He's representing Cuba. And this is a project of theirs. And the reason that there's 30-day right now is the limit of the ordinance for this type of signage. So they've put it up for 30 days, get, by getting, getting a building permit from the Building Safety Division, but this would allow the extended time period.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Speaker, Type 2 action. No further review of the board is required. Time will make that we approve item number 17 with Board Policy 6 attached to it. Do I have a second on that?
Second, Doug.
But Charles Palaco? All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
This is adopted. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Take care.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Alright, item number 18. 311 Wall Street, site plan to add fencing and associated site improvements. Section block and lot is 48.331-1-16. Secret determination, zone C2, mixed-use overlay district, Stockade Historic District, Heritage Area. It's in Ward 2, 311 Wall Street LLC is the applicant owner. Okay. Do we have somebody here from 311?
I don't see them.
Alright, well, I saw the back of the. All right, well, I saw the back of the property today. Is this, is this the fencing that they're, uh, uh, planning to put in, Sue, the? I see the chain link, but then the next page is the, is the proposed one.
Right, the chain link fencing was put in as temporary fencing. Um, this is the black aluminum style fencing is more permanent. Um, staff did have some questions, as you'll note, in the, in the comments that we've made. Um. One had to do. What? Wayne?
Did we table this? Yes.
Um.
Can you hear me?
Well, we do have some questions, yes. Um, and I will say it did go through Heritage Area Commission. Um, and it was approved there, and it also went to the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission and was approved there.
All right, so. I mean, so we could, so the fencing looks good, but what are the, what are the other associated site improvements here that we're dealing with? Try to look through my notes here. Is that basically it, the, the, the fencing we're dealing with right now?
Yes, but there's, there are, there are notes that we've made in staff notes. There are questions that we have. Um. That I think we want to have clarified first.
Okay.
There are also, uh, restriping, so we talked about having possible landscaped areas. And also a dedicated area for dumpsters. Um. Just kind of laying out for future uses.
Okay.
Is there any part of that?
Landscaping was the big thing.
Is there any part of that that you want to do on staff level, or since, uh, they got approval by the other boards?
Um, I, I'd like to come back to the board, the planning board.
Okay. So, so do we recommend, do you recommend tabling right now?
I would. I don't, I'm surprised that they are not here. They've been at all the other meetings.
I know, I'm wondering if they're having issues or something, because that is strange. Do you want to skip ahead and maybe I'll send an email or something?
Okay, does everybody else go over that?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, let's.
Kevin.
Good, good. Kyle. Um, all right, we'll move on to item number nineteen. One twenty-seven Greenkill Avenue is a site plan to establish a community center. Section Block and Lot is fifty-six point one hundred nine dash two dash thirty-two. Secret Determination. Zone R two, it's in the mixed use overlay District. Ward four, one twenty-seven Greenkill Avenue LLC. Care of Scott Dutton is the applicant owner. Is Scott here again?
I am here, and Peter Buffett is here.
Yeah, Peter, can you take yourself off mute?
Yep.
Wayne, just a point of clarification, um, I filled out the application as applicant. Uh, the Nobel Foundation is the owner.
Yeah. Okay, so who, so. Do it then, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to say Wayne and I are both in midtown right now, and there's a train going by, so bear with us.
All right, um, yeah, Scott, who, uh, do you want to talk to this then?
Yeah, no, I think, um, the board should hear from Peter about the program, which I'm sure you're all going to, um, appreciate and enjoy.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Buffett.
All right, hi, everyone. Uh, thank you. Uh, so we have been working closely. We purchased the home, one twenty-seven Greenkill, uh, Noble Foundation did, and. Have been working with Dan Whelan at the Boys and Girls Club. On a variety of programming opportunities, uh, in conjunction with their work, and. Uh, it has been determined by him really that we will be focused on. Uh, the kids, the young adults that age out of the club. And, uh, uh, look forward to continuing opportunities, education. Uh, other things they may be interested in that we could pick up, uh, from the club. Uh, so it would be mostly probably, we're, you know, eighteen to twenty-four year old, uh, young adults, and we'll be. Providing a variety of programming there, uh, for them, a- and to some extent, uh, by them. Uh, and the club to determine, uh, exactly what they may need, but it's everything, you know, from potentially financial literacy, computer. Work, uh, even furthering education in terms of connection with, uh, work in the community. Uh, and other opportunities. So we're really. Uh, in deep partnership with the Boys and Girls Club on exactly what the programming will be, uh, but that's who will be serving there.
Yeah, if, if I could just add, um. Having had the opportunity to be a part of this project and learn more about it, um, there's a tremendous desire. Um, um. Amongst many of Kingston's youth to find a path to career development. And, you know, it's, it's hard to get somebody's attention at age thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. But by the time they're seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, they're realizing that, um, you know, it's a big black box out there, and. What Peter and the Boys and Girls Club are proposing is an incredible opportunity to create connections. With local, um, mentors and professionals and help kind of. Help our community come together. I mean, the, the, the banks are looking for people to fill positions, insurance companies. Um. Technology companies. I, I was with, uh, Stu Myers from Exago, uh, today, and he said, I'm having a hard time. Finding people to fill these positions, and yet there are very talented individuals. That are seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old, so it's, it's really an incredible program. I just wanted to add that as a stakeholder here in the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Okay. Wayne, Mrs. Sue, do we want to go through some of the, uh, staff notes? Um.
I was talking. So.
I'm sorry?
No, I, I had, I had my thing on mute here, and I was talking, and I didn't realize it, and I had a lot, you know, so yeah, I was going to recommend we go through some staff notes here.
Okay.
Uh, parking is first on here. I see twelve spaces are required.
Yes. They've, uh, they've shown three. Um, I spoke to Scott earlier about this in the afternoon, this afternoon, and. Um, we came up with what I think is a very viable solution. That rather than turn that entire green space that they have on the parcel into a parking lot, which we both. Do not believe that they're going to be, ultimately have a need for. Maintain that as an area to be reserved for future parking if the need arises. And Scott did prepare a plan that shows that area. Unfortunately, the notes were completed by the time we got that. Plan in, so we weren't able to include that. But, um, it does show, um, twelve full spaces being provided onsite. And also the access area would then be accordingly widened to twenty-four feet, which would be required. So there is the room to do it, but we believe that maintaining the green space is probably more appropriate. And more aesthetically pleasing for the overall community.
Okay. Um, so, so the way that you just, uh, that you and Scott had discussed that, does that take care of, of this requirement then, in, in? In your eyes then?
Yes, it would be, it would obviously be identified in a final decision that that would be. An area reserved for future parking if the need were to be determined.
Okay. And I see that the storm drainage, uh, it's going to, uh, sheet drain off into that, that grassy area then? Does that meet our requirements for, for taking care of, of drainage then?
Yes. Scott, it's correct, it's sheet draining, correct? There's no structure.
And we'll, we'll pick up, um, any, um, roof drainage with gutters, leaders, downspouts conveyed to the existing storm water system, which is dedicated there.
Okay. Uh, um. So I also see that the fencing along the street is planned to be removed. What, is there a picket in the front there?
It's a chain link.
Chain link, yeah.
Um. Lighting?
The, the lighting, given that, you know, as Peter appropriately described the building, it, it's a house, so we've selected residential style lighting. Um, that will meet the requirements of the, uh, one to five foot candles for, um, for safe ingress and egress. But, um, no different than any other home in the neighborhood, um, and it's shown on the architectural drawings. You know.
Okay.
The doorways, um, no poles, um, so that it doesn't feel commercial. I would say it. It'll probably be one of the more softer, elegant lighting solutions along that, that strip there of Greenkill.
Any during times when the facility is closed, is that going to be, they're going to be on all the time, you think, or when it's closed, or at night, or what, what's the proposal there?
We haven't gotten that far, but even if they were on all night, it would be no different than, you know, porch lights on single family homes in the, in the neighborhood. And, uh, you know, we have to go to the county for review of this project. If any of the board members. Are interested in, um, doing a site visit, um, in small groups, um, I'm right around the corner. I'm more than happy to give folks tours. Um, and make larger copies of the plans if anyone's interested in the architecture. You know, speaking of the architecture, the, the, the basic concept here is that the existing brick building be restored. And we're proposing a, um, a modest addition to the rear. That has the appearance of being a carriage house, you know, like you would have expected on. And any structure like this at the turn of the century.
Right.
Okay. Uh. Sue, you want to go through some of your, the other stuff on your staff notes here that are popping up to you?
Um, they were just some general questions. Um, Scott, will there be any, um, exterior mechanicals? That I'm not seeing either on the, on the exterior roof or ground mounted?
There, it's, um, air source heat pumps, and they're, they're shown in the full architectural, so you might have to get. You know, deeper than you're accustomed to, to going into the, to the drawing set, but there is a mechanical, mechanical plan. They're shown to the rear on the side.
The west side?
It's like a long way.
The way we came.
It was like, it got like, Able Street, the Red Bridge, right?
Sorry about that. I don't know who was calling.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Um. From the.
Utilities are going to be sufficient for the, the facility as it's, as it is and expanded?
Uh, absolutely, yep. Talked to Central Hudson, uh, plenty of power there. We're upgrading the electric from, I, I think it's a hundred amps now to two hundred amps. But, uh. Adequate services there.
Okay. Um, signage? Any proposed signage yet?
We haven't discussed. And, um, I think if there was to be any signage, you know, we all recognize that we would need to come back to the board for, for something like that.
Okay.
In the big.
And last but not least, just the refuse. And you said you're planning on it not generating, uh, more than a typical office building, so you would be utilizing the city. Services for, um, refusen recyclables, correct?
Correct. So just to put it in perspective, um. It's an office type use, and it's about the same size as our office. Um, we don't fill a single, um, garbage can each, each for our pickup. Um, we do about two thirds of a can for garbage and about the same for recycling, so very modest amount of refuse generated here.
Okay. Those were my questions.
This is Kevin Roach. Are you planning any outdoor activities?
I, yeah, I, um, I would say because of the green space, uh, there would most likely be some outdoor activities. I can tell you that Dan. At the Boys and Girls Club is thrilled to have access to green space, uh, because they currently don't have any, so. Uh, while I can't say what they might be or, or how often it might happen, my guess is that there will be some outdoor activities in that green space.
And I believe there was, I believe there was an event there possibly on nine eleven. I saw a bunch of white chairs lined up on the backyard there.
Yep.
So it looked like a great space. I mean, obviously, it may have just been outside now because of COVID. It might have otherwise been inside the Boys and Girls Club, but. It was nice to see the lawn being used.
Yeah, it's a tremendous space, yeah.
Kevin, to, to your question, if I, I'll just add that. Both this project and the metro project should be completed on or about the same, uh, timeline. And, um, as I articulated to Sue and Kyla. Between now and then, while the building's under construction. If we have greater clarity to what that outdoor green space wants to be, we recognize that we would be coming back to the board to, to present any kind of. Additional plantings. Right, right now. Um. We're hoping that after the county weighs in, that the board would consider approving this project so that we can pull a building permit. And, you know, start a major renovation and the modest addition in the back, which is, you know, a nine to ten month project.
Very good, thank you.
Anything else, Sue?
I don't have anything. Any other board members?
No, it sounds like a great project.
Okay. Then I would, uh, Wayne, I would recommend that we go ahead, table this application, and staff will do the referral to the county planning board. Um, we should have that back to us by next month, and we'll make a final determination.
Mr. Buffett and, and Scott, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Have a good day.
And, uh. We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we table item number nineteen. Uh, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, Mary Jo. Uh, all in favor, Wayne S. Charles Palacco?
With the conditions that it go to the county, correct? Just clarifying.
Yeah.
Your motion is tabled for referral to the county.
Yes, okay, that's the motion. Uh, so Chuck is a yes, right? Uh, Mary Jo?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. All right, um, moving on to item number two. It is, uh. Bond release, twenty Cedar Street, request for performance bond reduction. Section Block and Lot is fifty-six point one hundred nine dash four dash two point one hundred. Section block allotted fifty six point one hundred nine dash four dash two point one hundred. Zone C two, mixed use overlay district, Ward four, RUPCO is the applicant owner. Do we have Scott here again?
Yes.
Okay. Uh. Sue, you, I see you conducted a site visit on, in August of, of twenty twenty with Chuck Snyder.
Call, we did, we originally did a site visit and there were certain outstanding items. Uh, Kyla went back actually this time and met with Chuck Snyder on site and went through all of the remaining punch list items. They were all completed. Um, the one outstanding thing we are waiting for are the as-built plans. Um, Chuck has assured us that they are in the works and that we will be receiving a copy of them, uh, once they're completed. Um, that being said, at staff level, I don't have an issue with, uh, releasing the bond amount. We have a very good working relationship with RUPCO. Um, I am going to, um, presume that I will take Chuck's word for it. We will get the as-built plans.
And, and I, I can reassure you that we received the as-built plans. We had a few comments, sent them back to the construction manager to ask them to, um, fill in a couple of gaps. So they've already completed the first round of those and, um, you'll see them soon.
This is Wayne Platt. I agree with Sue that we have a, a, a very good relationship with RUPCO. I'm sure that they will, will follow through on, on making all the necessary changes and, uh, uh, bringing this in compliance. And, uh, I also, uh, recommend releasing the balance of the performance bond. Anybody else on the board? They agree?
Agreed. Kevin Roach?
Mary Jo agreed.
Matt agrees.
Philaco agrees.
Hey, you're good? All right, Vince? Okay. All right. Um, so at this time I will make a motion that we, uh, will authorize the release of the remaining performance bond totaling two hundred, two thousand, five hundred, eight dollars. That is a, and do I have a second on that?
Second.
Mary Jo Wiltshire, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Is adopted. All right. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Have a good. Uh, Sue, do we have any other business before this board?
Kyla, were you able to get ahold of anybody for three?
Yes, I just got an email and I just sent her the link. She said she must have missed, missed the notice. So, I mean, like seconds ago, I just sent it. So if you give her a minute, I think.
Okay.
I'm hopeful. I think she can use the link if I send it, right, Sue?
Yeah.
I'll be right back, folks.
Okay.
I'm barely surviving at two percent of battery and I'm plugged in too.
Gotta get yourself a computer, Wayne.
Well, I'm on my. I disappear, I'm gonna go back in on my phone. So then I have like four.
She's here. She's here with baby.
Here's, here's my. Eating nerds for dinner.
Oh, delicious. Um, am I on?
Yes, Victoria.
Hi. Good evening, Victoria Polidoro. I'm very sorry for being late. I missed the email notification, but I did get Kyla's email. So thank you, Kyla. Um, so we're here tonight on behalf of three eleven Wall Street. The applicant is proposing a new permanent fence. It will be black aluminum, uh, four feet along Crown Street and six feet on the boundary with the neighbor. And that's it. I think it will be a much more aesthetically pleasing than the current temporary fence sets up. Uh, we spoke to the neighbor before we made the submission and at the time he didn't have any objections. Um, as part of the project, uh, the owner will also be, um, repairing the sidewalk with bluestone and brick in a light kind manner.
Victoria, one thing we did notice, um, I know we had talked about four feet, um, on the street face and then six foot on the side, but the plan says the sideline will be four feet as well.
So, um, if you look, let me pull it up one sec.
And the simulation looks also like it's just a consistent height all around.
So, I mean, at this point, if you want to approve it at four feet, I think the owner would be fine with that rather than having to redo the plans and go back before all the boards. Um, I know my narrative said six, but the, the, um, right, the drawing was drawn by someone in his office. So, it, you know, it's, it's not necessarily to scale, but.
Well, the, the four foot and six foot sections, I know you've already, this is Wayne Platt. How are you tonight?
Oh.
You've already got this approved by Heritage Area and Landmarks. Is that, did they approve that with the four foot and six foot sections?
Yes.
Okay. Sue, uh, where, where are we talking about the four foot and six foot section?
Four foot would be along Crown Street. And the six foot would be on the, um, direction on it.
I think it's south.
I think it's south. Yeah, I think you're right, Victoria. South side.
I'm, I'm okay with it as proposed. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
So if you look at, um, the elevation, this, oh, you can't see my screen. If you look at the site plan, um, the elevations do show a four foot on the first, on the long piece and then six feet for another piece. Um, it's the one, two, third from the end on the site plan. Yeah, so next page, I know that, I know.
Same height though.
It, that's true. That is. He just, again, he didn't do it to scale.
Okay.
And if you scroll down, I think there's a note there that says four feet.
Okay, so. This right here?
Yeah, four feet and then this will be the six feet.
So si- six along the side where my arrow is?
Yes, the four here.
Four feet here.
And, and that's because the code only allows a maximum of four feet along the front edge.
Okay.
Uh, but, but again, I know there's an inconsistency, so if, you know, we're not looking to hold this up.
Kyla, what is the note? Can you, can you zoom in to the note? The, no, go up to the side property line, up, up a little.
It says four feet.
You got it right there.
That says four.
That says four feet.
Go to the next page. Where they show the elevations, that's where it shows a four foot and a six foot. Those two, right?
Right.
Back up. Yeah, that's where the dimensions are four feet and six feet. So.
Okay.
Did you say they were gonna fix the sidewalk also on the Crown Street side?
They are. And, um, you can make it a condition of approval that, uh, we submit a revised sheet to correct that note if, if you're gonna go with the six feet.
Mm-hmm.
Victoria, there's no use, there's no use right now, right? It's a vacant building.
Right. And if you know a tenant who wants to take a giant space, they're, they're happy to speak with them at this point.
Well, what, one of the things we just talked about was, uh, the dumpster that's been there for quite a while. I'm not sure if it's still there. There's no space for a dumpster enclosure on the site. And I know it's vacant right now. Um, I don't know if the board wants to address that when there is an actual tenant or whether space should be dedicated at this time.
Also, Victoria, another thing that staff has brought up, we'd like to see landscaping incorporated. Uh, I mean, I know we're talking about fencing right now, but obviously landscaping, um, the actual photograph has trees, but they're not, I mean, they're not transferred to the plan. So obviously we want to see that tree continued. And I'd like to see some additional landscaped areas.
Are you talking about trees?
Or within the parking lot? Yeah, if you're gonna be redoing the sidewalk, I think that now is the time to, um, put some tree pits in there and put a couple of street trees along that. I mean, that's a long length, I think. Um, and it's.
Is there enough space? Is there enough space in between the street and the sidewalk for a tree?
Or even possibly within the fenced area? I don't know if there's space to maybe put breaks and have, have some trees in here or behind the fence? If that's a possibility. I like, I like the idea of it behind the fence instead of in the street.
Survive a lot better, I think.
Yeah.
So, uh, the only thing that.
Three.
Is that there's.
Four, four or five spaces back there. Put some landscaping in. And I think it would be a nice addition to that lot. It would provide some, um, area for runoff too. You know, it could put some, like, they could be rain garden style.
So I, I don't think the applicants oppose to trees. It's just if you put trees in, now, uh, can you see my, um, mouse? Is there a way to do that? If you put trees along the boundary, you're going to lose those one, two, three, four, five parking spaces. And although there's not a tenant using it now, those were the, you know, those spaces will be required. Um, you know, depending on who goes in to the, into the building. And so the preference would be to wait until we have a tenant so we can discuss operations, traffic flow, you know, what size dumpsters needed and parking demand.
The one space at a minimum, I think you're going to lose because there's an existing tree. Of, of this pic, this photograph, the existing photo shows an existing tree in there now. That's gonna be lost anyways. Maybe one or two spaces actually. Looks like there might be two trees.
Okay, um, I, I should go visit.
Sorry, I'm trying to find the picture.
Yeah. Uh, go one more up, I think. No? There.
It's really hard to tell if those are planted or if those are just growing out of, you know, I don't know.
I don't know.
Those are just growing out of pavement, basically.
Uh, they might be volunteers.
Pretty established.
I guess it's up to the board whether you want to, it would have to come back for site plan review or, you know, when a use is being proposed. I guess it's up how the board feels about addressing that now or at a later date. I think landscaping would be an improvement, but it might hamper them getting a tenant if we force them into some kind of landscaping now. And maybe it is better to just deal with it at site plan review and incorporate it through the site plan.
Uh, this is Sue. I guess, Victoria, my question would be that without a tenant, why, why the expense of going through the, uh, pavement, restriping and all of that right now? If there's no tenant.
Well, I mean, the parking lot was in a state of disrepair and had potholes and they fixed the potholes, but they do want to make it look nicer. Um, I, I don't think it's a huge cost to do the restriping.
It may attract a tenant for you. Am I on? Can you hear me, Sue?
Yes.
Okay. No, I was saying that striping may attract a tenant or two, you know? So what we're looking at tonight is the fencing and the improvements to the, the sidewalk, right?
Mm-hmm.
And whether they want to stripe in the parking lot or not, that's really not our concern right now, right? Are we good? I mean, we're just dealing with those two items, right?
Right. The parking lot, I mean, well, that's up to the board if you want to deal with it now or do you want to hold off? I think what I'm getting the reading of is that the board would like to hold off on the parking lot actual improvements and wait till there is a tenant and reserve the right to review that along with any future tenant occupancy, um, the design, layout, landscaping and lighting. Um, I think that would be okay, although I do think that there should also be a, a well-defined note that street landscaping, you're doing the sidewalk area over. So we're neglecting to put in street trees. So I think there has to be some accommodation one way or the other. Cause now's the time.
Can we?
Sidewalk to, to make that accommodation. That wouldn't have anything.
Can we leave the landscaping a little bit? On the.
Can you repeat what you just said? You broke up.
Sue? Yeah, can, can we leave the landscaping up to staff level?
For the street?
Yeah.
With sidewalk area. I, I would be comfortable with that.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, right now, I mean, putting this fence up is, is certainly a big improvement from what is there right now. And, and, uh, if we can, if the board, if the rest of the board is comfortable with leaving the, the sidewalk landscaping up to staff level, I think that would, that would make me happy. Is the rest of the board okay with that?
This is Matt. I'm fine with that. This is Kevin. I'm fine with actually including the trees in the future inside the fence. I do think it's a pretty narrow there in order to start putting sidewalk trees. They're not gonna last.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot of brick there. I, I don't know that street trees are really good for the outside there.
Yeah. With the thought that we are absolutely going to be, uh, requiring them when the parking lot is reconfigured for a tenant.
Uh, before we would, uh, put in street trees, I mean, I would ask that we at least do a site visit because I'm not sure how.
I wasn't even really thinking of.
You were thinking in the parking lot, Wayne? I think we're losing him again.
Yeah.
I was.
I was, you have to repeat that. It was broken up on me there by Victoria. I'm sorry, but it was broken up. What was the, what was the last comment?
For me? I was just, I was just commenting that before we commit to street trees, I'd like to go out there and see if there's actually room to put trees in. It looks narrow from this photo.
Yeah. Well, when I was mentioning leaving landscaping up, leaving landscaping up to the staff level, I was, I was not referring to street trees at this time. So if we can find something else other than street trees right now.
I think, Sue, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to submit an application for the sidewalk to Public Works. So I think at that point, we can speak to superintendent whether street trees are a good idea there or not during that application process.
Okay. That's a good point.
I would just like to see the fencing and the sidewalk improvements move forward at this point. We'll talk about other stuff as, as they, as they become part of the bigger picture.
I agree.
This is Kevin Roach. I agree.
This is Matt. I do, too.
Okay, so what I wrote was that the sidewalk improvements would require the Department of Public Works sidewalk permit. At that time, the DPW would determine whether or not a, street trees are a viable accommodation, if there's accommodations for that. I also wrote that the planning board is reserving the right to review the parking lot design and layout, as well as the lighting, landscaping, and drainage, et cetera, once tenant, a tenant is determined to occupy the space. Okay?
Kevin Roach, I say yes.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah, and what, all right. And this is Wayne again. What, what dimensions are we going with the fencing now? I want to be clear on that.
Well, I thought we were going with the four-foot along Crown and the six-foot along the south side, and that, as Victoria said, they would submit a revised plan to correct that note.
Okay. And, and that, that's not something that has to go back to landmarks, right? I mean, they've approved the concept, really, right now.
No, they've approved.
Okay, 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 good. As long as that's, we don't have to send them back anywhere, all right? Is, is the board good with how Sue has just presented?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I think we lost Wayne.
Yeah, Wayne, you're.
Yes, the motion. I want to put it into. Okay, all right, so can you just read back? I want to make a motion down.
You want to recognize this as a type 2 action? No further environmental review is necessary.
Okay, I can do that.
The notes that I have are Board Policy 6, that a revised plan will be submitted to correct the fence height on the south side to six foot, that the sidewalk will be deferred to the DPW when they review, the sidewalk landscaping will be deferred to DPW when they review the sidewalk permit to do that work for restoration and reconstruction, and that the planning board reserves the right to review the parking lot design and layout at, at a time in the future when a tenant is determined for the property, which will include lighting, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
All right, and Ms. Polidoro, how do you, how does that sound to you?
So Corbin Place has just joined us. Those conditions are exactly what we discussed. But if you had any questions, he is a project manager for William Gottlieb, and he may be able to give you input on the sidewalk and the tree request. Otherwise, you know, the motion was discussed. Cool.
But how, but Victoria, how Sue just presented that, that's, that sounds like in line with what, what you're proposing for tonight?
Yes, and Corbin, just to bring up to speed, there is a discussion about whether there should be street trees put into the sidewalk, and they're leaving that up to DPW to decide, so you can have a conversation with them about that. Department of Public Works.
Yes, yes. Yeah, okay?
Okay.
All right. Okay, so, so how, this is Wayne Platt again, so how Sue just presented that, that narrative is, I want to put that into a form of a motion that we approve this item number 18. Do I have a second on that?
Second. Kevin Roach?
Second by Kevin Roach. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, it is adopted. Thank you, Ms. Polidoro.
Thank you, and again, I apologize for being late, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
No, no apologies. This is, we're, we're very flexible here, you know, so. Okay? All right. All right, Sue, do we have anything else before the board tonight?
I don't. I'm good. Only, you only have a couple months left if you haven't made all of your training requirements, so I can email out. Vince has his.
I want to touch base with you. I want to touch base with you about that wetlands training that I couldn't get into, so, all right?
Okay, there, there are plenty of others.
All right, I'm making. All right. Thank you, and I make a motion that we adjourn. A second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Mary Jo, yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis? Kevin Roach?
Yes.
All right, we're, we're adopted. Vince and Katie, thank you so much for being here tonight, too. All right?
Good night, folks.